Microphones on, we are also now live on YouTube with volume. I wonder if the city manager is having problems signing in?
Oh, he is missing, isn't he? There he is. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. City Manager. Long time no see. Yes. Okay, four o'clock and everyone is here. So, we shall begin. Welcome, welcome everyone to the City Council Meeting. January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Temporary public comment for email can be sent in to thecityclerk@lospanas.org. It must be received by four P M. The day of the meeting. And you can also view the City Council Meeting on the city's website on the YouTube channel. At this time now, I would like to call the meeting to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Police Chief Breezy, are we here? There we go.
Evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States. Speaking Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God. The liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Chief. We will now go to roll call. City Clerk Maloney.
Jones.
Present.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Aria.
Here.
Item number four. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion by Councilmember Lewis. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Lambert, second.
I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert, to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call vote. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. We will move on now to the administration, the Oath of Office, to our new council member, Mr. Refugio Yamas, District Two, and for that, we will go to City Clerk Maloney.
Are you ready, Mr. Yamas?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to have you stand up. You can sit down. You can be a little informal. If you'd rather stand up, that's up to you.
I already did.
Are you want to stand up? Okay.
There we go.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Refugio Morales Yamas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. That oath of office, no matter how many times you take it, it never loses its emotional impact, does it? Now we move on to the roll call. City Clerk Maloney.
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamas?
Here.
Aria?
Here.
Welcome, Mr. Yamas, to the council. We will now move to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, including agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to two hundred and fifty words or less, by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall five twenty J Street, by mail, or email, cityclerk@lospanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council Meeting. City Clerk Maloney, do we have any comments?
I have received zero comments.
Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. City Clerk Maloney, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers, two-two-five-two-three-zero through two-two-five-three-five-zero, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Minutes for the December sixteenth, two thousand twenty, City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number six-three-zero-eight. Appointing members to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee, Deborah D. J. Barcellus and Diana Thurston, terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. City Council Resolution Number six-three-zero-nine. Amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget by increasing permit revenues in the amount of six hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, building plan check fee revenues in the amount of sixty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars, encroachment fee revenues in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, and corresponding increase in expenditures for technical services in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirteen dollars, in the building department budget associated with building permit activity. City Council Resolution Number six-three-one-zero. Rescinding Resolution Number six-two-six-three and approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Los Banas and the County of Merced, Department of Public Health, Division of Environmental Health, regarding onsite wastewater treatment systems. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Does any council member have any items, and I'll go through councilmen one by one, that they want to pull for either discussion or a separate vote? Councilmember Jones?
Uh, nothing to pull off for me.
Councilmember Lambert?
Nothing here, also, Mayor.
Mayor Portem Lewis?
Nothing to pull.
Councilmember Yamas?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
And I have nothing to pull either. So with that, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mayor Portem Lewis. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second by Councilmember Yamas. All in favor? City Clerk Maloney, roll call.
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Our next item, we have our Finance and Information Technology Department reorganization. And for that, we will go to City Manager Tarazos.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think my mic is off mute, so can everybody hear me?
Yes.
See, head nod, heads nodding, thank you. So, thank you, Mayor. This item relates to the reorganization of the Finance and Information Technology Department in October, two thousand nineteen. For those that were on the council then, you'll remember that the Information Technology Manager resigned. After that resignation, I took the opportunity to look at the department to see if there were opportunities for reorganization, to see if we might be able to maybe move some things around so the function could be more efficient, provide a higher level of service. So, at that time, a decision was made to contract for I T services and not fill the position of the I T manager. But let me, let me go back a little, a little bit more than two thousand nineteen. You'll, you'll also remember that prior to two thousand nineteen, that, that was a, a department which had a department head overseeing, overseeing the department. So it went from pre-nineteen being a department head to an I T manager to where we are now, which is really a, a contract for service with some, with one staff person who is a city staff person. I think through that reorganization, what we, what we really, really have seen over the last year is a higher level of service, the ability to really take on some of those network and I T infrastructure projects at a higher level now that we are contracting for service with a, a private contractor. What we've also seen is a reduction in cost to the city as a result of that reorganization. So, again, going back in, in FY, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, we were spending a, a little over four hundred thousand dollars a year on salary and benefits. We have gone to spending now salary and benefits and contract services to about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So we're saving in the neighbor, neighborhood of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And, and, and I really think we're, we're seeing a higher level of service, a more reliable network as a result of that reorganization. So with that reorganization, the, the day-to-day responsibility for contract management has fallen to the Finance Director. And, and that, that contract management and that department, new department was really outside of the scope of that position's responsibilities. So, as part of this item, this evening, we're recommending the amendment of the salary range for the Finance Director to provide for those additional responsibilities. So, based on that reorganization and associated salary range adjustment, if this item is approved by the council, the Finance Director's salary would be increased by five percent to twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars monthly or one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two annually. And we, the staff, would propose that that salary adjustment be retroactive to January first. Because this, this reorganization does include a salary adjustment, we really have to follow a script in the interest of transparency and in compliance with the government code so that the public is aware of those executive level compensation, that executive level compensation. So, with that, again, with the reorganization, I think we're really seeing a higher level of service, increased network reliability. So with that, I'd recommend the council consider approval of the resolution attached with the staff report. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Lambert?
No questions here.
Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, Chair will entertain a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number six-three-one-one, amending Division Four salary schedule as it pertains to changes related to Section B in finance as outlined by City Manager Tarazos.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here.
Yes, sir.
Question that we accept the resolution number six-three-one-one as it pertains, as it reads, amending Division Four salary schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
Second, I thank you, Ms. Lewis. So I have a motion by Mr. Lambert and a second by Ms. Lewis to approve Council Resolution Number six-three-one-one. Roll call vote. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Move on to item ten. Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number six-three-one-two, authorizing the City Manager to suspend late penalties for delinquent water, wastewater, solid waste services, and business license fees. And for that, we will once again go to City Manager Tarazos.
That one's actually mine. I'll take it.
Yeah, oh, it is.
Unless you want it, Alex.
My answer, Williams. Thank you. Okay, so for that, then we will go to Finance Director Williams.
So tonight, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to suspend late penalties for delinquent utility accounts, which does include water, wastewater, and solid waste. And in addition to that, also suspend business license late charges. So, in recognizing the pandemic is, and that is the hardship that it's causing for all our residents, the reality of unemployment, just people not being able to go to work, reduced wages, closed businesses, we have several issues with our, our water utility bills. Again, also, back in March of last year, the governor of California froze the ability for the city to do shut-off. So, usually, an incentive for people to pay their water bill is to not be shut off, or once they're shut off, that gets them to come in and, and start their services back up, and they pay late charges, and they pay an admin fee. That admin fee has already been suspended because we're not allowed to do shut-offs, but this is causing a hardship, not only for our residents, but also for the city, because there are several residents within the City of Los Banas who have failed to pay their utility bills altogether. Some of them haven't paid for two or three months, but I hate to say that there are several accounts that have went unpaid since March of two thousand and twenty because we are unable to turn people off. So what we're asking you to do tonight is just to temporarily suspend the late charges. And this is to help people get back on their feet. We've started a program here at City Hall to already try to help people with these outstanding accounts that have astronomical balances to start a payment plan. However, part of that process is on a monthly basis, they're getting a fifteen percent penalty. And if you haven't paid your bill in a while, a fifteen percent penalty, let's just say that you have a bill that's a thousand dollars. That's a hundred and fifty dollars that we're tacking on additional every month. And it could be larger. There's some, some people that actually have larger accounts. So if we bump that up to three thousand, that's four hundred and fifty dollars. And tagging an extra four hundred and fifty dollars onto account is not allowing these residents to help get themselves out of this debt. So we're just taking the opportunity to, to, to help the residents, suspend the late charges, and maybe help them climb out of the debt by making payments and temporarily suspending the fees. So we are asking for a ninety-day suspension. That would include February, March, and April. If we wanted it to go on any further than that, we would bring that back to council for approval. If this is approved tonight, if we need to continue it on past April, then again, that we would probably bring it in April to council for, for, for further approval. So this does take a hit, obviously, on, on revenues. However, let me just, generally, when we're budgeting late fee revenues, regardless of what it's for, whether it's for business licenses, whether it's for late charges for, I don't know, accounts, receivable accounts, or, or even these utility bills, we are very conservative. We do not try to budget based off of people's hardships. However, we do realize that, yes, there are going to be penalties. Yes, there are going to be shut-off fees, and there are costs associated with that, and that's why we charge them in the first place. So, we do budget, but we budget conservatively. We budget basically historically. So say, let's just, we'll use the water account, for example. If last year I collected a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in penalties, then I would be a little conservative and hope that, oh, maybe people won't have as much late fees this year. And I would probably dump, drop it down to a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, depending on what I thought was reasonable. I don't try to to increase the penalties every year. I, we just kind of keep it at a status quo. However, this money does go towards, and, but, a hundred and fifty is actually a good number. We could say that that's a normal number for water, for the water account. So this would go through those, to those budget costs. It would go for people. It would go for maintenance. It could even go for infrastructure, depending on what it is that we have in the budget this year. That being said, because balances on accounts are so high, we have already met our budgeted amounts. So technically, we're not losing out on anything. I mean, obviously, we still have some of these fees to collect, and that money still needs to come in. But if we continue to collect fees at the rate that we're going, we are going to be extremely over-budget in that area, which means that it's not significantly impacting the budget to temporarily freeze these fees. And that's across the board. That counts for water, sewer, and garbage. We are also asking for you to freeze business license fees. And that's a lot less of a hit, and that's because a while back, we redid the policy. We don't charge, we don't charge late fees the same manner we used to charge late fees. Now we charge them a late fee. However, if their account is more than sixty days, I believe it is, for business licenses passed due, then that business license becomes null and void. The, the account is written off, and they have to start the process back over. So that, as you can see from the staff report, it's only about a forty-five-hundred dollar hit to the general fund. The others, and I, again, was conservative. So the numbers that I speak of here in the fiscal impact, that's in relation to historical numbers, because I thought it was more fair to base these amounts on historical amounts than based on pandemic amounts, because, like I said, the accounts are abnormal. Under normal circumstances, they wouldn't get out of control this bad, but we have no other option, because at this point in time, we can't physically shut off their water, which obviously is the only incentive that we have to get people to come in and pay their bills. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, what I am asking for is a temporary sixty-day suspension of all utility late charges and business license fees.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Questions from council? Mr. Jones?
This was something that I, I brought forward, and I'm really surprised that we didn't think about it a little earlier, but from my understanding, this will take care of anything that's outstanding as of today. So if there is three months' worth of late fees, it would still waive those?
So it will waive anything going forward after today. So once this, technically, today is a bill due date. And we, we are about to push the button and charge some late fees, but I think that that could be changed. We'll have to ask Mr. Vaughn if that's what you see fit, but this, what we were asking for would be for, after today, which would be March, April, and May. It doesn't erase any fees that they currently have. It just erases fees going forward. And a little caveat is, we did not charge late fees for utility bills when City Hall was closed. So we did temporarily suspend them because we didn't see that people had every option available to them to make that payment in a timely manner. So when City Hall was closed for that several months, we did temporarily suspend business license, or late charges. And then business license fees are temporarily suspended as well. So this is a continuance of that.
So, Ken, so I'd like to make a couple changes to this, because it's actually, when I, I, when I first requested, I actually wanted it for anybody that had it. I actually wanted it for anybody that had any current late fees that were outstanding previous to even January. And one of the things that I realized is that at 5:01 PM fees charged to account, so if you're going to pay, say, maybe 7:00 PM, the day of, or maybe if you're coming in from out of town, and you drop it off late night before the following morning, you're going to get a late fee. So I think we should push it back a little bit further and cover any late charges that are outstanding from, I would say, March of 2019, if there's any that are outstanding from there. And that's just late fees. It's not, it's not actual payments, utilities.
So that changes this.
And then on the flip side of that, too. Well, if that changes this, this is what I originally talked about, so I don't know where it got misconstrued at. So I, it was to try to take some of that burden off of some of that weight that some of these people have been carrying over from month, from one month to another. So that's what my bigger concern was. And then the other side was opening up the payment grace period until 11:59 PM that night of the due date, just because of some of our residents that don't get in until after 5 o'clock, whether they drop it off there at the Dropbox, or whether they pay it online.
Okay. So I would ask that you not go all the way back to March. One, that's in two different budget years, and it makes a fiscal hardship for the city. We just finished our financials.
Okay, let's go back to the last.
We finished our financials.
The fiscal year then.
I think, in my perspective, January would be appropriate. I think that if you're asking me to go back to the beginning of the fiscal year, one, that changes is what we budgeted for completely, and we won't meet any of those guidelines. And then, two, I'm assuming with that request, that you want me to reimburse all account holders that had late charges and therefore paid their late charges. So I mean, I could.
Not reimburse what's already been paid. It's just anybody that is currently outstanding on, let's just say, from the beginning of the fiscal year.
So from July?
Is that... So how bad would that throw us off?
So that's going to give... If we start from January or from July?
Uh, July.
So July gives us zero revenue. So the revenue that everybody approved at budget time, that's going to take it, is going to take it down to zero, basically, because I'm going to have to give everybody, in order to be fair, I'm going to have to give everybody their money back for late fees, is the way that I see it. Because, just because you pay it, you're being rewarded for not paying it. So I'd have to give it back to everybody. So that zeros out about $150,000 to $170,000 in each account, just speaking of water, sewer, and garbage. So that could potentially impact the budgets, because that money was anticipated for this year. It would be less of an impact if we went to the beginning of the calendar year in January and made that change versus July. I could do it, whatever the council sees fit, I can do it. But it will eliminate that revenue, which could post, potentially postpone either large purchases that could have already been in the budget. We'd have to reevaluate what hasn't been completed yet. So if there's a project that was based on that money, it might have to come out of the fund balance, or it might have to be postponed temporarily. So we can look at those items if that's what the council wants to do. Secondly, that, just to talk about the due date. So bills are given to each, and this has been this way till the end of time. The reason why the cutoff is 5:00 is because I have to be able to process, there's a whole procedure that we have to go through. It will be here tonight until probably 6:30. If it was a normal night processing late charges and penalties, preparing the red tags, things like that, I have to do that when nobody's in the system. So if I move the date by one date, then now it's become the 6, but it's still, eventually, it still has to be at 5:00. So me postponing by one day is actually moving the whole due date to 24 hours, which, or grace period. They have, at minimum, 15 days to pay their bill. They have the option for two different ways for it to automatically be withdrawn. They can pay over the phone, people can pay on the web, and as a last resort, they can come in here and make the bill. We try to make it very easy for people to pay. No, we don't accept postmarks, and no, we don't accept anything after 5:00, but that's because at some point in time, city staff has to process those late charges. They have to process those offs, and that's why it's cut off at 5:00. Can't make people wait around until 6, 7, 8 o'clock to give a little grace window. And I have to do, I can't do it the next day when everybody starts back up, because when they start paying again, then they have to be out of the system. I have to freeze the system and just focus on this one item. So nothing changes in the GL. And that's why the cutoff time is 5:00. It's usually 5:00, 5:10, 5:15, 5:20. We check the box until the last person isn't here. The only person left is usually myself, a supervisor, and the utility billing person. So that's why it's 5:00. And I would ask that, we don't change that. We try intentionally to get bills out, hopefully, 20 days, but no less than 14 days. That gives them two weeks to make their payment. And their bill due date doesn't change, so it shouldn't be a surprise. The only time it changes is if your bill due date is on the 5th or the 20th of the month. If that 5th falls on a city holiday or a weekend, then it's the following business day. So if it, it might be the 6th instead of the 5th, it might be the 7th. So technically, that's giving them two extra days anyway. So that's just a reason why there is no actual leeway, I guess we could call it.
Okay, I appreciate you explaining that to me. That makes a lot more sense, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel and cause you guys to spend a lot more staff time on making changes like that. So I would say, let's stick with your plan. Say, starting from the 1st of January, is that still a hassle, or should we just keep it to starting today?
That's up to, whatever the council sees fit, I would, January is a lot more feasible for me to work on than going all the way back to July. And if you do choose January, then let me know if this is a full reimbursement situation, or if we're, how exactly it is that the council would like to handle that.
You know, if we're trying to treat everybody the same, then that's late. If we, because there's a paid, or due date on the 5th as well as the 20th, right?
That's correct. So technically, the people.
If we do today, we missed out for the people of the 5th.
That's correct.
So maybe we can start it from that time and move forward from there.
Okay.
So whether you do a reimbursement or just what is outstanding.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we looked at when we put this report together, that we had already charged the 5th for January, and that today was the 20th, and we couldn't get it done any sooner. And out of fairness, we'll just start it in February. That's how I put the report together.
Fair enough. Okay.
Very good. So we're still good in the staff plan and not going back any further into retro, starting it in February. Is that, is that my understanding, Mr. Jones? And you're good with that?
Yeah, it just seems like it's going to be too much of a tax burden on the staff to be able to do that, and it's going to cost more than what it's probably worth. So.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lambert, any questions?
We just clarified it. So we're actually going to start it on the 1st of February. To be fair across the board, correct?
Ms. Williams? 1st of February, is that correct?
That's what I'm understanding. Yes.
Very good. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think 1st of February is a good date for start. There may have already been some people in January that have paid late fees, so that means staff has to go back and refund monies to those people. So it's always good to start on a clean slate, where you don't have those obstacles in the way. So I think February 1st would be a good day to start. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Yes, I agree. February 1st is fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Okay. So with that, it sounds like we're, council is good to go ahead with the staff recommendation. And that would be, Chair will entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number Six Three Twelve. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, Council, Mayor Councilman Jones here. I'd like to make a resolution to adopt City Council Resolution Six Three One Two. Assmitted.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
It's Councilmember Lambert. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Lambert, to approve City Council Resolution Six Three One Zero, One Two. Roll call vote, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Uriah?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very pleased to, thanks. I'm very pleased to see us working, working to ease the pains on our citizens. And thank you for bringing that forward, Mr. Jones, to staff, and thank you, staff, for bringing it forward to us. We'll move now to Item Eleven. Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number Six Three One Three, to nominate a candidate to the Special City Selection Committee for Appointment to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. And Mayor Portim Lewis has represented us there before, and if she is, if she's good to go with that again, then I would move to appoint her to the Special City Selection Committee on the Air Board.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. She's not being appointed. She's being recommended.
Oh, nominating a candidate?
Yes, because she submitted an application.
Okay. So we will nominate Mayor Portim Lewis for Appointment to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Maloney. Ms. Lewis, do you accept the nomination?
Mr. Mayor, I do accept the nomination. Just for clarification for our council, this is to the Governing Board, and I think the counties come up on a rotation basis. It's now time for Merced County to have the opportunity to have someone on the board. And each of the candidates listed here, I'm sure their cities are going to be voting for them. And it will require at least a minimum majority of the cities within our county to vote for one of the three candidates to be able to sit on the board. So that's how it works, and I'm glad that it's time for Merced County to sit on that governing board. It's probably been a while since we've been on the board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for accepting the nomination. Then I will make the motion. And do I have a second?
Yes, Mayor. I'll second that.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Jones, to adopt City Council Resolution Number Six Three One Three. Roll call vote, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Uriah?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you again, Mayor Portim Lewis. And hopefully, I guess we'll get out there, do a little campaigning out there. We will move on now to our COVID-19 status update, and this is City Council Resolution Number Six Three One Four, continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Banas. And for that, we will go to City Manager Taurasus.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I go to the recommended action item for the council this evening, I just want to provide a bit of an update on COVID-19 and a couple of other things. So Sonia, I practiced sharing my screen earlier, so am I okay to do that? I think I'm going to.
Let me make sure.
Assume I am, and share my screen for folks. Can we, can we see the Merced County screen at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So just wanted to take this opportunity to remind council and folks that there is a significant amount of information out there that's provided by Merced County regarding COVID-19. We, as the city, continue to push out information via the city's various social media pages, but did want to remind folks that the Merced County website that I have here up is a very good source of information. And this COVID-19 specific webpage is accessible via the main county website. So you'll see here on the website that the county is still in the Tier One Purple Widespread category. Down at the bottom of the page, you'll see the list of all the press releases and daily updates that are provided by the county. So I'm just going to jump real quickly to the COVID-19 statistics dashboard that's provided. Oh, gosh. And now my, apparently, my browser is not supported. Let's see if I can do that. Nope. What that would have taken you to is information, sorry about that, regarding the vaccine and vaccine availability. So unfortunately, I'll have to work off my memory and read my numbers, or at least in the ballpark. So Merced County has been provided about 6,000 plus or minus doses of the vaccine. Now, that number does not include doses that are provided to facilities like Sutter Health or other long-term care facilities by either the federal government or the state of California. So there is not a main depository of all the number of vaccines that are received by the county. So that 6,000 number only represents the amount of doses that are actually provided via public health. Of that 6,000, there's about 2,000-ish that will, are being received, are being received. A portion of those 2,000, unfortunately, are some of those Moderna vaccines that, that, that has, there has been a pause on as a result of some of the side effects that are being caused to some of the individuals. I think what we're seeing is, in terms of vaccine distributions throughout the state of California, is really a disparity in the number of vaccines that are coming to Merced County. So really, under the leadership of Adam Gray, he has really been advocating with Merced County to the state of California, directly to Dr. Galy, who is the Health and Human Services Secretary, for more doses of that vaccine to come to Merced County. When you look at how the vaccine is being distributed, and look at the number per residence, you really begin to see the disparity in the number of vaccines coming into Merced County. So according, so Adam Gray, and actually Senator Caballero, and our congressional member, Jim Costa, are in the process of putting together a letter to be sent to the governor advocating for more vaccines to come to Merced County. So when you look at the number of vaccines per thousand coming to Merced County, we're at about 12 per thousand. When you look at some of the other larger, more urban counties, for example, Santa Clara County, you see about 46 doses per thousand residents. And then looking at, you know, a county like San Diego County, they're getting about 57 doses per thousand residents. Merced County is the second lowest per thousand amount of doses coming to the county. So our state representatives are working to try and address that, so that we could potentially see more vaccines coming to the county. Also, in terms of vaccine distribution, my understanding, there will be a vaccine clinic tomorrow at the fairgrounds. It is by appointment only, in my understanding, as those appointments are booked. We will be, we've been asked by the county to, to work with them, and in the possibility of the city potentially in the future needing to stand up a vaccination clinic. So we'll be. So we'll be there onsite at the vaccination clinic tomorrow to try and get a feel for how it's operated, how it's set up. Um, in the event we, as the city, are asked to stand up a vaccination clinic, we'll be prepared to do that. Uh, we've also been asked by the county, uh, if we could provide staff, uh, that could potentially administer doses of the vaccine. So, uh, we've had a number of, uh, fire, firefighting personnel who are certified EMTs, uh, volunteer, uh, to, to administer those doses of the vaccine, um, if necessary. So with a little bit of training, uh, those firefighters will have the ability to administer, uh, vaccines. So, uh, we're working closely with the county to provide that personnel. Um, I've been in contact with, um, Adam Gray's staff, Senator Caballero's staff, to, uh, to work with them, to advocate for more doses coming to Merced County. Um, I'm, I was also told and learned, uh, recently that there's an effort, um, in a letter, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for not giving you a heads up, but, uh, there's an effort to coordinate a letter from all the mayors in the county, uh, to the governor, uh, in an effort to, to also advocate for more of those vaccines to come to the county. So, um, we're actively working on that, uh, working with our state-elected officials and the county to see, uh, if we can get more of those doses for our community. Um, and I'm hoping, and I think there, um, if my, my screen is being shared, uh, the county did create, uh, a website recently for, uh, individuals to Merced County to register, uh, for the vaccine. So, um, I'm hoping that is up on the screen. I, I would suggest that folks who are interested in receiving the vaccine to, to visit that website, uh, registered, registered to be notified of vaccine availability for wherever you, as an individual, may fall within the categories. Um, and, uh, you'll, you'll be prompted through a series of questions, and that will determine, uh, when in the tiered process, uh, it will be your turn. So, um, apologize for my technical difficulties in sharing the screen. Uh, apparently I had the wrong browser, but, um, I think that's all I have this evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, we are again actively working to try and get more of those vaccines for our community. Um, that there are distribution issues, I think, all over the most, in most parts of the country and in a lot of California. But, um, we are certainly working to try and, and, uh, obtain more of those vaccines and make sure if the city is called upon, uh, make sure we have staff that could provide those vaccines to the community, as well as, uh, make community center or other cities, city facilities, uh, available for vaccination clinics. So, um, that's all I have, Mayor, um, unless there are questions. But, uh, do, we are also recommending this evening, uh, that the kids, that the council, uh, consider adoption of the resolution to continue, uh, the declaration of the existence of a local emergence, excuse me, excuse me, emergency within the city. Uh, again, the primary reason for that is to continue to be eligible, uh, for potential funding, uh, that could be, uh, provided to the city, um, in the future. So that's all I have, Mayor. Um, I will, let's see, stop sharing my screen, go back to seeing, um, all of you, and I'm, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Tarazas. Uh, questions, Mr. Tarazas, Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. Lambert?
No questions, Mayor.
Ms. Lewis?
Uh, I just have a couple of questions out of curiosity. Um, were there other per thousand statistics given to you of areas that, uh, maybe north of Santa Clara County or north of San Diego, such as LA or San Francisco, or were these the only ones that they gave you?
Uh, there, I, I bet data is available. What I, I, what I was reading from was a draft of the letter that, uh, Assembly Member Gray, um, has prepared to send to the governor. Those, those were the numbers included in, in that letter. I can, I can certainly provide, I'll, I'll try to get that information, I can provide that to the council, if you'd like.
Okay, and then lastly, the other question is, um, you said that the county is looking for volunteers, uh, within city administer, well, within the city who can help administer, uh, the vaccination, and you talk about our firefighters that have been certified EMTs. Um, is it because this is being done by the county that we can only use county and city employees to do this? Or have we reached out to the hospital to see if they have staff that can help?
Right, it's my understanding, the, make sure I'm, my mic is live, that the county has reached out to the hospital, uh, and engaged them in a, in, in, in an effort to find additional resources. So that connection has been made, um, and the county has, has made that connection with the hospital.
Okay, but at this time, we don't know what the response is?
Uh, that, it's my understanding that Sutter is, is, is prepared to provide additional staff. I just don't know how many, uh, but I would say that Sutter, um, has actively engaged. They, they are, are, are very interested in participating, and they have been a, an incredible partner throughout, throughout this, throughout the pandemic.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Yamas, any questions of Mr. Tarazas?
No questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, uh, we're pleased to see that so much is being done, and, uh, very unfortunate of the vaccine numbers. Uh, and we're gonna, Assembly Member Gray is fighting, fighting that war, uh, with our staff and our various electives around the county to, to get that vaccine to our people. It's the number one question I'm getting everywhere I go, including church. Uh, so with that, uh, Cheryl entertained a motion to adopt city council resolution number sixty-three, fourteen.
Mayor, Council, Councilman Lambert here. I may, uh, we accept the resolution number six, three, one, four, continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency within the city limit, city of Los Banas.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Yamas here, I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, a second by Councilmember Yamas, to approve city council resolution number six, three, one, four. Roll call vote, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you for all the hard work on that. Uh, item thirteen, advisement of public notices, uh, we see no report. Item fourteen, city manager report, we go back to City Manager Tarazas.
Uh, thank you, Miss, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, just wanted to, uh, provide a brief update on, uh, Republic Services and, uh, garbage service, recycling service being provided. First of all, I want to remind folks that due, due to the holiday, um, uh, collection services is, uh, delayed by a day. So, so for me in my neighborhood, collection services would have been Tuesday. Uh, because of the holiday, that gets pushed out a day to Wednesday. So, um, service in my neighborhood was Wednesday, normal service would have been on Tuesday, so that will, uh, be in effect for the rest of the week. Um, seems like, um, service, uh, was picked up today, so that's a good thing. Uh, last week, uh, looks like service was on schedule as well, so, um, I think we're on a, on a good course. Um, I am finalizing the letter that will be sent to Republic, um, and that should be going out, um, tomorrow. Um, I, one, one last review for the city attorney, uh, then we will be sending, um, a letter to Republic, um, and requesting that we sit down with them, uh, to hopefully resolve the service issues on a more permanent basis, uh, for the community. So, um, again, just wanted to provide that brief update. You put your, your normal service was today, your garbage will be picked up tomorrow, um, hopefully. Um, anyway, that's all I have. Um, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is my report on, uh, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V Committee. Uh, MCAG, the, my first meeting to attend with them, uh, will be tomorrow, and so I don't have much there yet, but I will after tomorrow's meeting for our next meeting. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy, we've set up, uh, we're looking, we're always looking for revenue. Uh, as Supervisor Silver, I was a council member once, said, said so often, we're healthy but not wealthy. And so every source of revenue we can find to help boost our, uh, our operations, our potential for building and serving the public, we do. And Peninsula Clean Energy, we're gonna, uh, we're setting up monthly meetings with them and our staff and I to get together to pursue how we will spend and how to direct the funds, the extra five percent discount, and the, uh, uh, grants and loans and programs and incentive programs for solar, things like, uh, solar, solar power for buildings, new construction. Maybe we can get some extra money on new construction if it's solar powered, get some incentives on where, and we have a number of capital projects, all of which require electricity, so, uh, looking to pursue as many sources of funding for those as we can. And I think this opportunity with Peninsula Clean Energy is a great one. Uh, Measure V, uh, continuing, we had the big update on Pioneer Chaco last, uh, last meeting, and so, uh, I don't have anything new on that. Uh, and so that, I guess, is it from me on item fifteen for tonight. So that'll take us to item sixteen, council member reports, Mayor Portim Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I have one question for either you or city manager in regards to Peninsula Clean Energy. Uh, do we have a date certain as to when the letters will be going out to the community about whether or not they want to join or opt out of the program?
I will defer that to Mr. Tarazas.
It goes on, thank, thank you, Mayor, and I, I, Councilmember Lewis, I, I did, I apologize. I, I have your email, I got a response from Community Economic Development Director. Um, I had it up on my screen, I just neglected to hit forward, so I apologize, and it's here. Um, it's sixty days before launch. Um, part, part of the, uh, part of the issue is PG&E is moving forward with, with the program, and we don't want to confuse the ratepayers or customers. Um, and I'm looking at, uh, Stacy's email, but it looks in, like in the area of November twenty-twenty-one is when we'll be sending those informational letters.
Okay, so, um, then I would assume at this point, what we're doing is basically collecting information from the organization as having the mayor on the board, but, um, we're, we're, we're members, but we're not officially getting ready to launch the program to the public.
That, that's correct. We're, we've got a number of steps we need to go through. So those, those monthly meetings are primarily status meetings with the mayor and staff, um, in anticipation of the launch. Um, we'll be talking about outreach efforts that we'll need to be doing to the community, those sorts of planning sorts of efforts, uh, before we launch the program.
Okay, thank you. And with that, the other thing I, uh, only other thing I have is just to congratulate again, uh, Councilmember Yamas, and, uh, look forward to working with you, and I think you'll do a fine job as a council member representing district number two. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, now we'll go to Mr. Yamas with your first council member report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Uh, I've set a question as to the garbage issue. Has the city finalized, or do they have a plan of action, should services can have a, a relapse and a deterioration of the service and the timeliness of it? Just, just want to know, just generally, are we solidifying that plan of action?
Once again, defer to Mr. Tarazas.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Um, and, and, just, just want to, I guess, uh, as an intro, because this isn't an agendized item, um, probably not, probably can't spend a lot of time discussing what, what the, what the city's approach is. But, um, as I mentioned in my report, where I'm finalizing a letter, uh, that we'll, we'll be sending, uh, to, to the, to the garbage provider, uh, expressing the ongoing concern of the city about the service, the lack of reliability for the service. Uh, the franchise agreement does, does spell out the opportunity, uh, to assess liquidated damages as a result of contract, of their, their service issues. Um, but I, uh, so the letter will outline that, the letter will kind of, uh, outline the analysis we've gone through to determine, you know, whether or not we, we, the level of liquidated damages that could be assessed. Um, and, and really what I'm doing in the letter is noting the lead, potential amount of liquidated damages, but really wanting to sit down with Republic to meet. So again, because this is not an agendized item, um, really can't discuss the matter in that, that much detail. If there's an interest in the council in coming back, I would suggest we agendize an item or, or full council discussion.
No, that, yeah, that was, that was more than sufficient, you have that letter going on, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and, you know, congratulations, so.
Uh, and if you, uh, Mr. Yamas, if you choose that you want to bring that to a council agenda, then, uh, just send, uh, an email, make a contact phone call with, with staff, uh, Mr. Tarazas, and they'll set that up to put it on the council agenda. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No report tonight, just want to congratulate Mr. Yamas, look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you. And I too want to congratulate Mr. Yamas, uh, welcome to council. I see him on a regular basis, we're neighbors, uh, had some great conversations over the years. Um, we had, uh, a great little event for Dr. Martin Luther King. We had Los Banas today cover it so that it could be broadcast, we had some great speakers. And it was a beautiful day and a beautiful event with a very small gathering, very, everybody masked and distance safe, but, but beautiful. Um, the, we had a meeting regarding the homeless with Assembly Member Gray today. There, we are tackling it, and he is leading the charge, attacking it from many different directions. And I think all the cities have made it very clear that we don't have the resources, particularly the smaller cities, uh, to, to financially fund, but we can provide the support and help with the coordination so that we can pursue those financial resources at the, uh, federal, state, and county level to, uh, to address homelessness on all the different levels that needs to be addressed. Uh, and so I'm very pleased with how that's happening. Uh, interesting co- uh, commentary and con- conversations there. Um, the, once again, we got the information on COVID vaccines, fairgrounds by appointment. Uh, they, they are full for now, but, but go ahead and, and keep checking that website and making, speaking about making appointments. And we are getting more vaccines, thanks to the lobbying efforts of our assembly members and our congressmen, from what I understand. So, uh, I think that's all I have for today. Um, I'm just checking to be sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, my, uh, my weekly updates, uh, working at getting a, setting the video platform, and we think we've got that settled, and we wanted to make sure that it was a clean platform, that if people clicked on a video update, they didn't get stuff that didn't belong there, stuff we didn't want connected to our city. So my update from last Friday will probably be going up tomorrow, and then there will be another one going up Fri- this Friday. I plan to, uh, run those every Friday. I plan to run those every Friday based on our updates from City Manager and City Council. I would invite you to email me any information that you would like to get out for the benefit of the community and I can get that out to everyone. So we thank everyone, once again, congratulations. We have a very new, 40% of our council is new and our mayor is new and we're looking, going forward with a, with a new year. And with that, if there's no other business in front of the council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Jones. A motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and second by Mr. Jones to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes, meeting adjourned at 5:05. Thank you, everyone.